What it is, is a total of over $35 million in private sector investments anywhere from banks to ACs to Echo Sunflower to whatever. It's all in our community here in the past five years. I don't know too many cities our size that have that kind of investment from businesses that are growing here in our city. So, we are growing and we plan that of course be more. Population trends has been a slow off for some reason. You can see that we've been in that 38th of 4,000 for the past 14 years. This is from U.S. Census. Mitchell County population is interesting because it has gone down a little. You can look back at Mitchell County 100 years ago and you'll see twice as many people as there used to live here. About, we used to have about 14,000 people in 1910, 1920 years ago. Beloit has remained amazingly about the same for the past 15 years or so. You can go back and see the city has maintained its population but the county has gone down a lot in the past. It's an interesting demographic shift. We might, there's a clue to what's going on there. This didn't look the best. But, you can see what your major employers, our part town Full Time is well included here. Mitchell County Hospital is now actually the largest employer in Mitchell County with Beloit itself here. Sunflower, Echo of course is up there second. So, manufacturing is the second but then you see the other ones. What you see is the shift over time from agricultural dominated area, which still is important but doesn't employ as many people. Manufacturing is still important. You see more of the services now, more of the hospital, more schools, more of the government type of businesses. So, those are the ones that are actually higher after the employment numbers than what would have been maybe 20, 30 years ago when manufacturing would have dominated more. Which probably accounts for the shift in the demographics where you had fewer people involved in agriculture, fewer in the manufacturing but more in services. And I think that trend will continue to see more services consolidating here in Beloit and Mitchell County. Unemployment, amazingly, we had low unemployments through back to 2005. That's pre-recession. Even during the recession, our highest was 1.2% unemployment. Amazingly low. 5% is usually considered around full employment. We're at or below that almost every year. So, we do have unemployment opportunities here. Again, they're different than what they were 10, 20 years ago. So, anyway, we're writing out a comprehensive plan. You know, the planning commission really finished this work and forwarded that to the council here tonight. Originally, we started with a citizen steering committee a couple of years ago. And, you know, the next thing of course is the update planning and zoning maps after this. The big issue has been that extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, which is probably where most of our questions have come out. What is that? How does that work? Why do you need this? And that sort of, that has been generating the most conversation on the planning commission and in the public and what happened here. So, and we can talk about that as much as you want here, but that has been sort of the key conference, probably 90% of conversations on that. So, what's in action? Like I said, the planning commission's done, comes to city council and now you decide what you want to do with... The other option going on here is, and we did talk about, we've had members of the county commission attend our meetings and one of the things they have talked about is actually giving their own planning and zoning at the county level. I know that's been talked about for years. That's never really happened. How serious they are, I don't know, but I know they've talked about that at their formal meetings and they've come and talked to us about that. And whether they carry that forward or not, it's completely up to them. I mean, they can do that. Certainly an option for Mitchell County to do if they want to adopt their own planning and zoning. And that would, you know, theoretically that'd negate our three miles, but that'll be seen. We'll see what happens on that. So, they may go ahead and do that. I'm not sure what their plans are on that. So, anyway, so it's to the council at this point. I think that's it. That was my last one. So, anyway, I gotta do that very quickly. So, I don't know if you have any questions about that or comprehensive plan itself or some of the questions that have come up or planning questions for planning commission members, like I said, a couple of years tonight, and ask what kind of their experience was when we went through this and what they, what their impressions were and how they formulated the plan and got to where they're at.
That's a great report because I was thinking, when I lived here in '71, I bet you'd be amazed. There's probably been a couple hundred houses or more buildings down. And then I got to thinking about all the businesses. So, it is about the population but not...
Yeah, that's strictly. I mean, that's what I want to show. Yeah, the investment that is in there. I mean, you have a technical college here that is growing and you've become the center. I mean, I just got scheduled to rolling buildings, which we're gonna have a meeting with them here shortly about breaking grounds for their new facility. They're gonna rent a couple dozen. That's a $6.8 million facility that they're building here. That's a recent five day job to our way here too. So, you see a lot of it, a lot of the growth is around us because of the highway. We've got two main highways here. And I think you can continue to see that. Well, we see the investment under downtown. Here at Center, I didn't mention the two new businesses that are going in. One's a restaurant coffee shop downtown here. And the other one's of course the barbeque. We passed that through a wine beverage license. I think they're gonna go before us at too. So, we have, you know, some expansion downtown, some on the highway. And so, that balance is probably good.
Back then, Harris Pathing was obviously...
Right. I think these are discovered. Yeah. Yeah.
No, that's a great report. I've had a lot of people tell me their interest with what's moving on.
You know, I asked you from what's happening in North Kansas as far as housing and as far as businesses developing up there. And where Rob, you know, like I said, who knew? Even five, six years ago, we were gonna end up in a situation we're at now. But, it's an opportunity and I think the city has taken advantage of that. But then, yeah, there are people who stuff doesn't invest in here. And, you know, they see this as a place. So, we want to be the place where people are leaving rural areas or whatever, that they would come here, that would come here. We're not gonna get everybody. We're not gonna get the retail shopper, but I think we do really well. We do not have the classic big box stores in Beloit. Our retail sector is, our sales tax is up to what it was five, six years ago. Our property tax assessment keeps growing. So, when other towns are struggling, Beloit's doing very well. So, that's what all the planning is about. We want to plan for the future and keep that growth going. And I think that's where the planning commission's coming from. And that's what Hannah Hewen talked about. They were amazed because these from Nebraska, they see a lot of the rural areas really struggle there as well as in Kansas. You see a lot of small towns losing their jobs, losing their housing opportunities, losing their school. It's starting to shut down. We're not, we're not booming, but we're growing slowly as I, you know, I think should. I don't want to see a boom upside. That's not good for economy. So, anyway, ask you for it. So, any other questions?
I just want to commend the planning commission. All of them. They've done a lot of work and I appreciate what they've done.
And they really carried the ball forward on this. They had to answer a lot. Like I said, this has taken longer than we probably thought it was gonna take. So, they really hung in there. And, you know, they probably heard we've had some pretty tense meetings and back and forth. And we're open. You know, I think they've been accommodating, willing to really listen to people and to listen to their point of view and, you know, do as much as you can as far as, you know, promoting this forward. But, you know, so it's been a long hard road for them to do. So, I don't know if they have any...
Any commissioner ever commit themselves to zone that or whatever?
To do the, at the county level? I'm not sure they committed to it. They talked about it. They talked about it at our meetings that they would consider doing that. Especially as we passed it with the three mile extraterritorial, that they would consider counting out of county zoning. We originally started this with the idea that they would do the comprehensive plan with us at the county level. They thought about it and they just, they decided not to do it. One of their commissioners was on the steering committee that we had. And another commissioner has come to our planning commission meetings over the past two years. And he's participated in those. And he has spoken out about, you know, he would like to see the planning zoning at the county level. Whether the other two would do it, I don't know. I only considered it. And they talked about it at their county meetings.
You think they're capable of being organized enough for some, with all the people we've gotten involved?
Yeah. It would be, it would be hard because it would have to go through some of the steps that we've gone through as far as organizing the planning commission and going through the comprehensive plan and going through the zoning process. Yeah, it takes years as we've seen. And we already had a comprehensive plan. We've had one back decades. They would start from scratch and do the entire county. So, you see kind of a challenge that.
Well, and I guess my other question is, I can't answer the questions out there. What difference does it make to be zoned? You're gonna be zoned. You're gonna be zoned, I say.
The issue I think is control. Because of what's coming up with the extraterritorial is who has control over that. We do have two people from outside the city on our planning commission. One actually chairs the planning commission. And they both voted for the comprehensive plan as a reason. But, when it comes to zoning issues, of course, they would have a vote on that. But, you have to breathe from inside to outside. So, the issue comes is, you know, who's controlling what is going. I think whether you're inside or outside the city, they listen fairly to those issues that have come before. So, it's not inside versus outside as far as they've been concerned. But, that has been sort of the criticism that there is. So, you know, they see that as going out to the county but not representing the county fully. I guess that's where they're coming from as far as, you know, if the county was doing it, the county would control. It wouldn't be the city.
There'd be a lot bigger load on it.
It would, yeah. I think that's why they haven't done it in the past. I mean, so they, you know, they kind of rely on us to do it. So, that's why, that's why we're doing this.
You know, Glenn, after attending several, two or three of the, you know, the planning commission meetings, the main thing that came up, it seems to be the biggest situation called college, you know, has been that three mile ETJ. Can anyone from the planning commission or someone from the steering committee that was on that when it was discussed, addressed what good can come out of the three mile ETJ for the city of Beloit? I mean, I look at, I look at what happened at Abilene, you know, in Disney with some of the people down there. They wish, they would have had that three mile ETJ because it would have saved them from that sexually oriented business down their own interstate in Disney with them. But, is there anybody else who might have come from some other area that would have some kind of input as far as the pluses or minuses of the three mile ETJ?
Right. I can tell from my perspective and of course other people. We did have a gentleman came from Beatrice who was on our steering committee. And he told us about how the business he worked with actually drove the planted prostitute on a county-wide basis because of those issues like that. Because they were investmentally and they're from the act sector. But, they wanted to make sure that if they built something, there would be this sexually oriented business or something else next to them that would conflict with their business. So, they, they came in the net or they wanted a county-wide zoning, which they, they find it was driven by a business actually that came to town. And so, we wanted to spend it. And what we want to do is be secure in our investment, that we're gonna not have these conflicts down the road where somebody is next to us is gonna complain that we're raising our livestock or something next to housing, which popped up next to us. And now people are complaining about run off or whatever. So, he said, it was very much in their business interest to have planning at the county level up there. So, he was all for it from that perspective there. And so, we talked about the Abilene situation and that does stand out as that is intentional.
But, the livestock thing, I mean, that would be basically controlled from the council for that.
It does to some extent, but if there are, the rules on there aren't quite where we thought that were. I mean, there's ins and outs and we could go into that a lot, I mean, as far as we can place whatever. But, they really thought it was in their interest to actually have more, you know, some, it's like a security blanket for, you know, certainty in what would be. Because then you don't have just somebody popping up next to you. So, I mean, our whole thing from the beginning, we were trying to avoid conflicting land use situations. They have commercial next to industrial, next to housing. And people are complaining constantly about their neighbor next to doing this, that and the other thing. And just that makes it sense everywhere. And we have that to a certain extent here because we don't control outside. And we do get complaints about dust and other types of businesses that are outside. Even if it rained dust here in Mitchell County. And some of those people have written letters or comments about that. So, we do get those complaints. So, that's maybe where it comes in. And so, there would be a forum for people to come and say, you know, I don't think this should be zoned to whatever. So, you come to the planning commission and express your opinion. Red County is called Build Back If You Want at about three mile area or anywhere else in the county. There is no facility at all up there. So, that's the whole gist of it. Like I said, folks can sort of speak for themselves as far as what they got out of extraterritorial jurisdiction and that sort of thing. And that's just sort of the things that I remember being talked about. So, that was just what it was.
The one I know about is had a family gathering. Somebody, Corey, mentioned this three mile thing. And they said, there's people over there naturally that want it either. Well, now somebody's wanting to build a cell tower just right on the city.
Yeah, I just hear about, yeah.
So, they're fighting that. The city said, nothing we can do.
They can't do anything about it. Like, yeah. So, when those things pop up and they may not happen every day, but if they do, you need to have something to address and say, okay, maybe that should be down the road over here instead of over here. But, you know, you leave yourself pretty flat open to that sort of thing. So, we're not just trying to scare people, but those are real things that have come up here, you know. And so, when you do, how do you approach it? What's your plan? And really, that's all it is. You're just planning for the future and trying to make sense of where the city might grow in the future, where it may not, and what those, what those uses are and would be compatible and which ones would not. And that's really how I communicate all that. So, there's really nothing to it than that. It's just trying to do that as a city. And they actually have two representatives from outside. So, but if the county wants to take up the cause...
I would do it.
I'm gonna say that. I mean, you know, it's not easy.
It's very complicated.
So, I understand that. I understand what I want to do. So, anyway, I know that Nick and Kathy's here. I don't know, I put you on the spot, but I mean, you hear from Neil and I. So, I don't want to get anymore to say that.
They're shaking their head.
Yeah.
Oh, I think one of the main...
You have some input.
Yeah. One of the main reasons these people are upset is because you're basically putting restrictions on their property now with the zoning. You're basically taking away their right to own their property, do with what they want, how they want to develop it. Now, it's gotta go through some kind of planning commission, through some bureaucracy to be able to sell it to whoever they want to. Because if someone comes to town, they want to build a, I don't know, a building outside of town here. They won't be able to build this thing until they get a permit from the city saying it's okay to do this. Well, that pretty much takes away the landlord's property rights. And right now, when you take in a three mile zone, you take away the representation of people in the rural area. The people in the rural area have no representation out there now. If the city passes this, we're subject to city rules. And we have no say what we can do about it. Now, like I say, what the county wants to do is because at least it gives the people in the rural area a voice in the matter. But, with the city doing it, we have, we do not have a voice.
Except the comprehensive, you have two numbers on the planning commission are from the county. So, to say that they don't have a voice, I think it's just misinformation at this point.
You got a committee of five. You got two in a rural area. If there's gonna be a vote, it's gonna be in favor of the city every frickin' time.
Well, and that's not, we just proved that. The two of them from outside voted for the comprehensive plan. So, again, I think that's just misinformation that we've heard over and over. I mean, I'm not sure what to do with that anymore. We can argue that a lot, but...
Well, there's three county commissioners and one lives in Beloit. So, I don't see any difference.
Yeah, I mean, you can slice it any way you want. I mean, it's just, you know...
And I don't know that anything would prevent you from selling your land to whoever you want.
Well, they're not gonna buy it if they have to go to the city for permit.
Well, but we do that all the time here to the city.
It's all a permit.
Maybe they don't want a permit. Maybe they don't want to deal with the paperwork, the hassle.
Well, that's really bad, you know. I got a lot of things I do that I don't want to do the paperwork. I don't like paying my taxes over here and paying my neighbor.
Well, that has nothing to do with it. In fact, taxes are outrageously high anyway. But, that's another issue.
Hey Dave, have any people in that area talked to commissioners to see if they would go ahead and zone it?
The commissioners say that if you pass this, they will go ahead and zone it. Because they...
If, if we pass.
If you pass it, yeah. That's pretty much...
Well, they don't want to have to work then.
Well, they don't want to do it because they don't want to zone it because they know how much a headache it is. Because the people in the rural area are very independent and they don't want people telling you what you can and cannot do with their property. And that's what it boils down to.
I guess I have yet to see where that says that in this comprehensive plan where the city would be telling...
You're going to zone it. What does zoning do?
But, once it's gonna be zoned for...
I mean, that's the high deal.
What are we...
What are you trying to zone? What are you trying to do?
Looking out for, you know, if we as a city council are supposed to be looking out for the citizens of Beloit, and what do we feel is important for the citizens of Beloit? I would hope that the general public from the outside in the rural areas would be thinking the same thing.
Well, they do think about the same thing, but they don't like to be told what they can and cannot do and who they can sell their property to. And they don't want to have anybody, have any bureaucracy sitting there and telling them what to do.
Chris, what would be affected outside of the, in that three mile? What could you affect, the city effect on buildings? What would be the restrictions?
Well, the zoning description hasn't been written yet. But, it would be designed to protect residential or the land we believe to be best suited for expansion for residential. And it would keep industrial or heavy commercial uses out of that area. It would confine commercial activities, say, to the highway corridors and not out away from the highways where residential could develop. It would restrict activities of a factory industrial use like junkyards, salvage yards, that kind of thing, from those kinds of areas. It might restrict those completely out of the three mile zone. It would, so, once it's zoned then, then investors would know that they could come in and buy into a residential zoning district or a commercial zoning district or an industrial zoning district and understand that they would not be encroached upon by other uses that would, that would impact them, say, in a negative way. Those who want to invest in a, say, a mini form, five, 10, 15 acres or whatever, that could do so with confidence that some junkyard, some industrial use or some heavy commercial activity would not be built up right next door to them. In other words, we'd kind of, kind of risk, as we've got now, industrial and commercial uses kind of confined to the highway corridors. Kind of stick to that, that pattern and open up the other countryside, you know, where it's best, where we believe to be best for residential development for that use. And hold activities like, you know, the, I don't want to say undesirable, but the heavier commercial or industrial uses out away from what we believe to be best for residential. Those are examples.
Thank you.
Also, basically on those codes is in the statement or in this comprehensive plan is any buildings in this area, in a zoned area, will have to meet international building standards. What are those? It's not defined. Nobody tells us what it is, but it's in there. So, if we want to build a building out in the rural area within three miles, it's gotta meet international business or international building standards. What is that?
The city of Beloit has adopted the 2003 international building codes. We've been complying with those international building codes for 10 years, over 10 years now. The, even the old building codes that were adopted with the old UBC were in fact international codes. So, the international building standard is, is kind of a misnomer. It's something we use, we have used every day. Most communities throughout the United States are using international building codes. They were established in 2000 by the ICC, which is the International Code Council, and have been widely accepted throughout the United States ever since. We don't have at this time any intention of enforcing building code standards on the structures outside the city limits. We've not talked about that. We don't intend to do that. We intend to zone for use. That is how the zoning districts are used and to protect residential from industrial or heavy commercial, as I've explained. So, we really haven't talked about building code enforcements or nuisance abatement enforcement outside the city limits at all. This is, it's not been on the radar.
But, that is what this zone is setting up to do. I mean, maybe you don't have intentions now, but down the road, it's there. It's in our face and it's a threat. We don't want to have to sit there and have to buy a building permit to put a barn up or a chicken coop or anything like that. And who knows what's gonna happen down the road when you guys are gone? I mean, you gotta look towards the future on this because I don't think... You're opening up a can of worms and once again, you're trying to get people under control that have no representation to the city. So, they can't come to the city and say, hey, we don't want this stuff because they don't count. Their voices don't count.
How long has this been in place, Chris, the one that our current comprehensive plan?
Comprehensive plan's since the 90s. And it's been, so, just about 20 years.
How about the comprehensive, the three mile?
We, the language has been in place for probably four decades. That is, we've talked about jurisdiction, the three mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. What I believe is that the planning commissions and the city previously didn't understand was that they had to follow through with that. It's more than just put the language in the regulation or in the ordinance. I had to follow through by, as Katie explained, notifying council, county and the townships that we intend to do this. That, I believe, was never done. So, it was never followed through. We've had members from, planning commission members from outside within that three mile extraterritorial jurisdiction for many years, believing that we had the authority to enforce three mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, when in fact, I don't think we did. Just because we didn't, we didn't follow through that extra step. And quite frankly, it's, the regulation is pretty ambiguous.
And I'll just add to that. Basically, what happened before is this, is it got this far and was adopted and then everything stopped. The next step is the actual zoning ordinances. So, if those never get passed planning commission or that never happens, then it's like it's been for the last 40 years. There is no effect. So...
We didn't have a planning commission then, did we?
Yes.
Yeah. So, if those zoning ordinances are not actually adopted, this three mile on your plan means nothing. So, what Chris is saying, I think, is last time they just kind of stopped. They didn't ever actually go through with the zoning in three mile. And there's very specific steps for how to do that and it just wasn't done. So, I believe the plan is to, for the planning commission, if this is approved by the city council, the planning commission then starts that process, which is a long process. But, they are the ones who have worked on this.
I don't want to feed off of them. They had to go out further because of complaints about smell. That's why they went out on brown holes.
State regulations.
Yeah. We started restructuring the question.
I've done a lot of legal research on this. And what they were just telling you is absolutely true. When this was being brought in with the prior planning commission in the 70s and the 90s and in prior ordinances like Katie outlined in a letter she wrote, I believe there were maybe six different times that they kept mentioning three mile jurisdiction. Laws were not being followed. They mentioned the proper notifications were not being made. They also were not holding the public hearings that were required, which means there has never been a three mile jurisdiction for Beloit that was legally passed. It was never done properly. So, when they say it's been there for 40 years, the language has been there since 1973, when the county and the city initially had a planning commission. But, it was never executed properly. It not only was not enacted, it never was legal. So, Beloit has never had three mile jurisdiction. Another issue, I agree with David on his concerns. But, I think the main concern of the group of people that are really worried about this is that in my research, I realized... the group of people that are really worried about this is that in my research, I realized that in the plan, it says the city should use voluntary and involuntary annexation. I did more research into the annexation statutes, and when a city wants to annex, possibly AGCO, which that is our biggest fear, or the COOP, but AGCO is our biggest fear, what they have to do is go to the city planning commission and see, the word they use in the statute is, they have to see if the plan to annex is compatible with the plan. That is why I feel, I don't know who wants to do this, but I feel that is why the city is trying to pass this. Because if it says-